Men, bring it back to council or send it back for more work. Is that fair enough? All right. Thank you very much, Councillor Hendricks. Going to item 3A. Ms. Bozuhudic.
Good evening, council. Today, administration is seeking direction from the Committee of the Whole related to on-demand transit. Beaumont has been working with our regional partners on transit service delivery and looks forward to the Regional Transit Service Commission launching as early as 2022. In the interim, the city needs to provide transit service that is economical and serves transit users in a way that upholds the economic, social, and environmental goals outlined in Beaumont's strategic and statutory plans. Since the city has joined the Regional Transit Services Commission earlier this year, there have been a number of significant challenges facing transit delivery as a result of the pandemic. Less people are commuting long distances to attend post-secondary education or work in the city of Edmonton. The risk of the COVID-19 transmission may deter users from returning to public transportation. Through the Regional Transit Service Commission work, it became apparent that the cost of our transit service was not competitive under the current contract. With reduced revenue expected, this continues to be a challenge and is particularly important to address in the interim between now and when the commission begins providing service. Smart fare has been delayed in the region as a result of procurement challenges. The U-Pass program is still on hold, which would have provided an additional revenue source and better met the needs of our post-secondary students in our city. There is an update as of today, this afternoon, with the U-Pass program. The negotiations have been finalized and we are moving forward with an agreement in principle with the post-secondary schools. The expected draft agreements are being created and moving to legal review late December or early July 2021. While the timing of our existing transit contract expiry of December 31st, 2020, and the onboarding of our new Regional Transit Commission do not align, Beaumont has an opportunity to add an optional new on-demand service through the competitive bid process for other transportation services for Beaumont. Other cities in Alberta are beginning to implement pilot projects related to on-demand services such as Edmonton and the city of Medicine Hat being the most recent. In particular, ETS has contracted services to deploy small buses to set pickup points in specific neighborhoods to further transfer riders to designated transit hubs. The introduction of a bus-on-demand system would add to the transit connectivity and could provide Beaumont with the flexibility to address residents' needs by providing a local service where none exists today. At this time, I welcome any questions council may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation and the information. A bus-on-demand service would add a great service to our community. So I guess the question tonight is, what are you looking for us, from us tonight? To give you some direction, to put it as part of the RFP, and then the results will come back as part of budget, or what's the ask tonight?
As the council wishes, that's what we're looking for, yes.
Okay. And so, members of council, so I guess the question is before us is, do we include this in the RFP to come back and then see what the cost would be and then have it come back to budget? Councillor Moncalf-Swain. Thoughts and comments?
Yeah, thank you, worship. And thanks for the comments. First question. I see transit is two, there are two separate items with regards to transit. There is the service going from Beaumont into Edmonton, and then there is within Beaumont. Can you just clarify, when you say bus-on-demand, are you talking about options for one, the other, both?
The, it would be, right now, we have the commuter service, which we are under contract, and the bus-on-demand local. However, we would leave it open to the tender if there's another proposal that comes in from a vendor.
Sorry, I'll ask a clarifying question. So I'm not quite sure. What do you mean by that? I guess, for me, I see this as there are two separate RFPs, and I sound like a broken record. We had this dance a month ago, but I'll carry on down that line of questioning. Right now, we have a service that we've committed to the residents of Beaumont to provide transit from Beaumont into the city of Edmonton. I recognize we're postponed right now. What we haven't done is talked about bus-on-demand within our community. I'm definitely not opposed to it, and we'll get there through this discussion, but I think it's crucial that we determine the distinction between, are we talking about going into Edmonton? Or are we talking about here, or are you offering up an RFP for folks to come in and bid on potentially both options? Like, what does that RFP look like in your mind?
We could do it either way, but right now, we have a commuter service that needs to continue, which would be what you described from Beaumont to Edmonton, with maintenance requirements for our current three buses, which would transition to the Regional Transit Commission. And then we have an option that we could put in that plan to say, okay, do you have options for local on-demand within Beaumont? So exactly the same kind of pilot projects that we see in other municipalities to help ridership get from a point in Beaumont to our Ken Nichol transit shelter. To connect to the commuter service.
Okay, so I think I'm starting to follow along. The, I guess, the bus-on-demand, just the language around that, right now, we have a set schedule, right? It goes at six, 6:30. Well, not right now, but typically when we're back up and on. So are you proposing that the commuter service into the city of Edmonton, is that still going to be on that set schedule? Or is that going to be on-demand, which to me, you use your app and you call it up and you need to go from A to B? Or can you just explain how that would work?
Right now, the RFP has the current schedule from the six, 6:30, seven, 7:30. We've left that as our service routing plan, so we would maintain that.
Okay, thank you. And then what it sounds like is, on top of that, you're going to be inviting the potential bidders to provide some sort of plan if they have, if they wanted to look at into, within Beaumont commuter service. And not a prerequisite of it, but if they do provide that option, then we would consider that as part of the evaluation. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay. Do you want to keep going?
Yeah, keep going. You're going down the same track I'm on, so.
Yeah, okay. So then, I mean, obviously, cost comes into play here, right? And the reason why I think two RFPs, two separate processes, is we may have a, there may be a bid that is, that is more competitive from a financial perspective for just the commuter service to and from Beaumont, without the option of the bus-on-demand. And I'd hate for that one to be penalized because they don't have a bus-on-demand option. I think we could consider, I mean, they'd both go out at the same time, but consider them a separate RFP. So that's just maybe a comment more for council. The other comment I guess I'd make is the, you know, is this the right time? And we can talk about it budget, but is this the right time to be launching a pilot project? We're in the middle of a pandemic, our main bus isn't running. When, I don't expect high-volume ridership for bus-on-demand within Beaumont based on the pandemic. So I'd hate for us to compare that. I mean, it's obviously going to cost the city some money. Is this, I guess the question I'm asking council, is this the right time to be doing that? I know St. Albert and Morneville had a proposed pilot like this and they canceled it. I'm not saying we have to do what they did, but just to give you the information, because a pilot is supposed to give you information whether you want to commit to this kind of longer term. And I'm a big fan of bus-on-demand. I think it's absolutely what we need at some point in our city to make sure that we can get residents from the south side up to the Ken Nichol and not have to drive up there and move them within and around the city. But I'm not sure this is, this is the right time. I'm not opposed to it. I just thought I'd point that out that ultimately, this is going to cost the city some money and we may not get the results from a pilot that that we're looking for. So I'll pause there, worship. I got the clarification that I was looking for. Ultimately, I think this does need to be two RFPs as part of the process, but I'll come back with additional comments and questions later on. Thank you.
Councillor Van Newkirk.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna go down a little bit of the similar line of questioning there. So the explanation that was provided actually doesn't match with what's written on the paper here, I don't think. What's written on the paper is bus-on-demand, and then we speak about moving people about through the community. And the way the RFD was just explained was that the RFD is going to be for commuter service back and forth to Edmonton, where proponents may have an opportunity to also talk about their bus-on-demand additions. Is that correct? Did I hear that explanation correctly?
No, no, we have an existing, we have an existing commuter service, which is the one we have currently, the contract that expires at the end of the year, which includes maintenance for our buses, as well as if resumed, the commuter service that we have. So the on-demand portion would be the internal, if we were looking at as an option, to look at what we would have locally to provide complimentary service to that commuter service.
Okay, so the, so the document in front of us doesn't speak to the renewal of the commuter service. Is that, is that a separate idea then from what's in front of us then? Is that separation? Because the two ideas are being confused here in my mind. And I'm not straight with it, and I see other councillors nodding, so we need to get some clarity on this. And I think the first time this was put in front of us, it was not clear either. So maybe another attempt at some clarity would help.
So we have a current contract with ETS that manages and provides maintenance for our current commuter service from Beaumont to Edmonton. That particular contract began in 2017. It expires at the end of this year. We would go out typically for when a contract's over, we would go out for another tender for that particular contract to maintain the services. So that's item number one. What we're saying is by going out for tender right now, there's an opportunity to add an option to provide some kind of pricing for a local on-demand type of service within Beaumont.
Okay, no, yeah, I get that 100%. So I guess what I'm pointing out is that the item number one isn't explained on the paper in front of us. So just for clarity, the intent is, is that, you know, a contract was ending, therefore, administration is going to go and try and find a new contract. And in addition to, the discussion tonight is on bus-on-demand and whether or not that should or should be included then, right? For ultimate clarity, because, you know, the way it was presented, there wasn't talk of, on the paper in front of us, there wasn't talk of the commuter service and whatever else, right? And that's the clarity that was missing the first time that this was presented as well, and that discussion was also challenging. So, yeah, so that's that, Chair. Would I be able to chat on a different subject?
Sure.
I just wanted to know and understand a little bit on the bus-on-demand, the intended, the intended target, the intended residence, the intended demographic, the intended users of such a service. Have we reached out to them or heard from them? I know we've done our transportation master plan type engagement and events, and we've done some other engagement events, but I'm just wondering where we might get some feedback or have engaged the potential users of such a service to learn what they may or may not like or be supposed to use or any of that before we go making the decision on bringing it to Beaumont.
We would be providing that engagement as well during the process, and that would be part of the option for providing on-demand. We need more current information related to that.
Okay, thank you. CEO?
I can't move the thing on. Here we go. All right, thank you. Further to what Jennifer was saying, because Jennifer's come along on this kind of midway. I know I've been involved personally in discussions with some very successful carriers in this country who have done this in a number of different places in Alberta and other cities and other provinces. So we're building or looking at the system based on their corporate knowledge. And as we go along, if we were to go down this route, will we continue to collect information that would further identify routes, people, frequency, and so on? So that's what we based the notion on. And as Jennifer said, what we're suggesting we do here is if we go out for a tender for a commuter and it comes back less than the cost that we're currently paying, we would like to, or suggesting that we transfer some of that cost or savings into a bus-on-demand and then let it build within our community.
Thank you. Councillor Bernhardt, followed by Councillor Stout and Danilke.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. The question I have for you is regarding the RFP process. And when you put together the request for bids on the bus-on-demand as well as the commuter service, it's my sense that if a bidder came back with the optional on-demand service, they might do better than a company that doesn't provide that service? And I guess the question I'm asking is, is that fair game? When we're exploring rather than deciding at this point what we want? Do you understand where I'm going?
As far as an optional, we can wait it so that it's, we can change the waiting so it's an option for us to look at and to explore. We could take the waiting out of it. It's just to find out what other options we have available to us with different vendors. So if the comfort is to do two separate RFPs, that's one thing. Or within the same RFP, we could just say, do you have an optional service? Provide us details. It's not going to weigh into this particular contract. We can draft it either way to make it fair, if that's what, if that's what you're, if that's the concern.
I think that is the concern. And just to follow up if I'm. Similar to what I heard from councillors of Van Newkirk and Moncalf-Swain, I'm not sure I really get bus-on-demand. It's not like Uber, that's on-demand. This is still a commuter service within, with an internal commuter service, or do I phone up one person and I get a bus? Like, I just don't get that on-demand piece. It doesn't make sense to me.
The on-demand, the way it was, there's different options. And typically what it is, it's an app that a service provider or a bus company will have, they'll have a smaller bus. The app, they request a bus at 3 o'clock over at Bellevue School to take me over to Ken Nichol. Whatever that transit, that's the kind of app they would use. And yes, a bus would come and pick them up, but it would be a much smaller bus than our big transit buses.
I guess I wonder if the bus is needed, if that's more like a vehicle rather than a bus.
And they may, and the vendor may have smaller vehicles.
Yeah, typically, like what's going on in Cochrane and Okeechobee, they're using 15 passenger vans.
Yeah.
But what makes this also different from Uber is you're sharing your ride. So it, the app will go through and calculate, like if I call, you call, councillor Stout calls, councillor Danilke calls, it'll route through and it will pick everybody up and then drop you off in order. It's not direct door-to-door service. You don't get the bus to yourself. You don't, the app is continually redrawing the route.
Councillor Stout.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm still a little confused about what I'm being asked to decide here. All right, let's, let's. I want to ask you some questions about the statistics that are provided. If we go forward to page 41, there's a chart there showing the operating expenses in 2019 and 18. The numbers for ridership, revenue per rider, cost per rider, subsidy per rider, are those, those are dollar amounts, I assume?
Yes.
So then, just roughly averaging, that looks to me then like for every ride that we provided on this service, the rider paid less than $4 and the taxpayer paid 20-ish. Is that, is that for per ride? Is that correct? Am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, you are.
So now, my understanding was that by going to, by agreeing with the RTSC to provide that service, that they would therefore be able to reduce that, some of that cost to the taxpayer. And I am assuming then we're still proceeding with that, that the request for, the request for bus-on-demand doesn't really affect that? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then going forward to the next page, we've got a chart of the average number of riders on a bus again through 2018 and 2019. So the thing about the average, looking at the average, it seems to me that, you know, the highest one there is what, eight? And when we had a capacity of 42. So it seems like the buses are, on average, not running very, very full, which means then that maybe our buses are too big for the service that we're providing. But what I can't see is, when providing a capacity, you have to be able to deal with the peaks, and that's not included in this chart. So is it true that the buses?
We've never been in double digits on peak. So with the peak that we've had here, we've been once, sorry, twice at 11 was our maximum that we had on a bus during that time.
So we've got a 42-person bus carrying 11 people as a maximum.
Correct.
No? All right, Councillor Moncalf-Swain shaking his head. Again, that seems to me that a bus-on-demand type service would be more appropriate in that case, but that's not what we're discussing in this capacity. That's what you just confirmed.
Well, yes and no. We're getting there. But, because I got some questions in a second and some thoughts for council, but I'm tracking where you're going with this, so.
Follow-up?
Well, my only follow-up was, given that this contract expires on the, when was it, at the end of the year? Then, I mean, is there some scope for providing the same service with a smaller bus? I guess, is where I'm going.
Well, yeah, that sort of leads into my grander question. As this contract's ending, why would we, where's the opportunity to do something different, to provide more effective cost-effective service if those buses are the wrong buses? And things like that, but. Okay, and perhaps bus-on-demand could handle the commuter portion too, based on ridership of four people. So I think, so, yeah, sorry, went down the rabbit hole. But I think getting into, I think trying to separate them is going to be tough because you're, is going to be tough to get any type of innovative service. I mean, you could get the two, you could get internally, you could get commuter, but you're not going to get somebody that's going to think outside the box and be able to do both for better. And so, because I read the data the same way you did. If we got eight people on a bus, it's 11 people max. Why are we running 42-passenger buses and paying for them and the insurance and the maintenance and the and the storage when we can get away with a 15-passenger or 20-passenger van? So that's my question, I guess, is, is there opportunity to A, improve service, or B, change the model of how we deliver the service we have to be more cost-effective even after? Like, could we sell these buses?
As part of the Transit Commission, the buses go in, back into the commission to utilize. That's part of the agreement we have. So those three buses would be part of the fleet as a whole in 2022. There may be opportunity to look at, look at providing those buses earlier if the commission would be willing. I'm not sure they're in a position, and perhaps then Beaumont could take on a smaller service and help the overall. There's those options as well, but that would involve the commission because these three buses are tied to our commitment to the commission.
Okay, that's good for that. Councillor Danilke.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for the presentation. A couple of quick questions. It's moving things along. I do support the RFP to get a replacement provider for our commuter services between Edmonton and Central Street Park. It has to be done by the end of the year. I get that completely. I think it's advantageous to try and tack on getting some pricing for transit-on-demand. I agree with Councillor Moncalf-Swain that maybe now's not the time to do a pilot project. We could simply let the vendors know in the RFP that we're looking for pricing now for on-demand, but it may not happen until COVID's over, until, pick a date, say, July 1st. So they're not expecting a service to be done in the first quarter. I think it's more prudent to do it down the road, but getting pricing now would help us for budget purposes for next year because the RFP has come back fairly quickly on the commuter services. So tacking it on, the timing should be quite, quite good. My question revolves around the on-demand services. If I recall correctly, when we had the presentation a number of months ago from the one service provider on on-demand services, the model I had in my mind was that a person could call from the south end, they'd get picked up and be taken to the north end and dropped off at, let's say, Sobe's or at the bank, for example, and they were called a dollar or two later and get taken back to where they came from. That is true on-demand. In the presentation here, we're seeing that suggesting potential pickup points, which could be, in Beaumont's case, the south end, extra foods, the north end, Sobe's, and the west end could be the newer X center. Those are the three pickup points, and the buses go between the three points. That's on-demand, but it more of a set schedule. So I prefer to see price pricing for both those models from the providers because I believe on-demand to me means on-demand is literally on-demand from point A to point B anywhere in our municipality of Beaumont. So it depends how you define on-demand, but I see it being on-demand is a true on-demand service. So I hope that helps clarify, I think. But I do support the RFP on the commuter services and tacking on a chance to get some pricing. At least give us an idea for next year's budget and so on, what on-demand could look like within our borders for pricing purposes. Thank you.
Okay, going for round two. Councillor Moncalf-Swain, followed by Councillor Van Newkirk. Oops, what happened?
So let me just first say, we, as Beaumont, voted and are committed to joining the Transit Commission. So let me just point that out. With regards to the numbers, I didn't want to get into it, but here we go. The reason why those numbers look poor, A, mainly because, and the reason why we wanted to join the Transit Commission is because the average busload is not a fair representation because we had all those dead hours. Remember, we've got the empty buses coming back into Beaumont. And the numbers here, respectfully, they don't mean anything. We're not talking about that. We're committed to going into the Regional Transit Commission. We've committed to our residents that we're going to provide a service from Beaumont into Edmonton. And so I don't know why they're here and they're misleading. The, with regards to providing service into the commission, I suppose I'd be absolutely right. We're committed as part of our support is to provide those three buses, so we cannot sell them. That service is not going to come up until 2022 to operate. So we need to find a way to make sure that we provide that same service that we've committed to our residents from Beaumont to Edmonton. I am fully supportive of getting the information around bus-on-demand. So let me put it that way. So, you know, the administration asked for direction. My direction would be to split this up, have the RFP for the commuter service from Beaumont into Edmonton to ensure that we provide that. There'll obviously be some caveats in there that say, you know, due to COVID, we're not sure when this is going to operate. And then the second RFP talks about anyone who wants to consider providing the bus-on-demand. I recall the presentation that we had, it made a lot of sense to me. I'm looking forward to getting those numbers. I'm always looking, I'm always, you know, for us to be able to put out a second RFP will give us good information, give us good data, and we can talk about that at budget time. So I'll always support getting, getting information. What I'm not supportive of is combining the two because that is going to count out a lot of providers who don't provide the bus-on-demand scenario, and you can wait it however you want, but to take all the bias out of it, just have two separate RFPs. I don't think there is the. I don't think there is the, there is the efficiencies of, of having both of those things that is going to significantly bring the cost down. So in short, step one, let's get the RFP to make sure that we have the service. We have someone, a provider, ready to go to get us into Edmonton when we're back up and running. And step two, I would direct the administration to bring back and to execute that RFP and bring that information back for budget. So those are, those are my kind of summary comments on this all.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Counselor Ben Newkirk?
Yeah, a similar wavelength for myself. I see it as two issues. From the, from the front end of this thing, I saw it, it was presented in a confusing manner. I didn't, when I, when I decide, or when I came in here tonight, I thought we were going to be talking about driving around Beaumont, bus on demand in Beaumont, and how, you know, what that would look like, and we are talking about that. But it's actually, what we're talking about is tying it to the commuter service. So I just go back to the, to the way this was presented, and I don't get that. So anyways, two, two RFPs is the way I would see it. If any proponent wanted to reply to both, they can. There's nothing stopping them from do that. I don't want to be in a situation where we are limiting potential people to reply to this RFP by any means. I think we've heard a couple of times that there are, you know, better deals to be had than the current deal we have. That's fine, but let's see it. Let's see people respond to the RFP and make that happen. I think that the information that was provided around those average busloads, you know, I had it in my prep notes here, and Counselor Monkoff just said it. That's, that's factoring in dead bus hours, the way I believe. And I think those numbers are misleading. I have, I have seen full buses full of people as I go, and I've seen empty buses driving around. And that's just the way it's worked so far, and that is what it is. So the, the summary of my thoughts is, information is fine. Let's figure out what it's going to cost and see if we can get a better deal on the commuter back and forth to Edmonton. But as a separate issue, moving people around in Beaumont on a bus on demand basis, let's, let's see what that could look like. So that's my summary. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that, and, and I see where you're both coming from. I'm going to respectfully disagree with you. I don't see them as two separate issues. Everybody's so, like, and the fact is, is yes, we have committed to go into the Regional Transit Service Commission. But I remember going to those meetings and sitting and asking the question, if we changed our transit service, could we upload the transit service we changed? And the answer was unequivocally yes. So we should not be afraid to improve service and add new service for our residents because it can always go up to the Transit Commission as is. And so if we can provide better service, cheaper service, more economically, more efficiently, we as council should do that. And I think, taking the two, I think, yeah, in one way I can see keeping them separate, but in another way, you have to allow proponents to be able to tie them together because maybe they can figure out an efficient way to do things differently and better. Like, I don't want to see us so tied that we can't, we can't get innovative. Counselor Barnhart?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I thought I understood, but now I'm confused again. And my question, I'll start with my question, maybe I'll be enlightened somehow. It says here that there'll be a public engagement on the on-demand ridership conducted via survey. And I really don't want to go out to the public and ask a question about something we don't know yet what it's going to cost, whether we're even going to go there. So the question is, when were you going to do that?
Now, that would have been part of the proposal from, back from vendors that had bus on demand availability, local. So we would have made that part of the discussion with them.
In other words, it would be part of the RFP to provide a consultation?
Yes.
I, I mean, the more I think about it, this RFP is just getting really lots of, lots of pieces to it that almost feels to me like we already know somebody's willing to do this, and we're kind of making a, I don't want to put that out there, but it just seems to me like we're stacking the RFP against the current provider. And I don't think that's exactly fair. I'm siding right now with the idea that we continue on with the commitment we've made to the Regional Commission. And Mayor, you've given me something else to think about. I, I don't want to not provide service if we can do it cheaper and better and get more, but I don't have enough information to see that yet. And when I, when I look back at the motion that council made on June 23, it was to prepare options to consider a service within the city and continue commuter transit service. And I'm not sure I'm seeing options. I'm seeing an RFP process. And I don't like going to an RFP without knowing where we're going. I could, it just, something's missing here for me.
CEO?
Yeah, I try and clarify some of the confusion. The notion of bringing this report back to committee of the whole was to have a discussion on whether you want to explore bus on demand. We had a presentation a few months back, I give you that. So there's been some time that showed one or two, I think, three different models of bus on demand. There's a number of ways it can be done and at different costs. The idea here is that would you like to explore a bus on demand service? Which is why it's in front of council. The commuter service, until we hear differently, will be part of an RFP. But I think we're getting hung up on the RFP. We're not suggesting there's one RFP here. It could be, but what we're asking is, do you want to explore bus on demand? We've got some high-level costs that were presented, but that's it. So this would give us those details. We've seen other people, sorry, other communities, and they're just, I mentioned a couple that are, that have bus on demand and they have different models, and it's working extremely well for them. So that's the question here. Certainly, the commuter is something up for discussion as council's purty to at any point in time. But what we're looking for is, we're about to go out with an RFP for commuter service. Would you also like us to have sent out an RFP to explore bus on demand? And then you're right, they would come back to a budget process and the decision would be made. I hope that tries to clear it up. I'm looking through the report here, I'm not seeing where we're suggesting that it's one RFP, and so the only service provider has to be able to do the commuter and bus on demand. And if that's the impression we're giving you, that's not what we're asking.
Okay, so refocusing the discussion, maybe it's, do we want to explore bus on demand? And then we can continue to talk about the commuter service as a separate item? Or what am I hearing, CEO?
Yeah, the direction we're looking for is, is we're about to go out for a commuter RFP. It's up at the end of December. Do we want to explore also an RFP for bus on demand? I guess that's, that's the question that we're asking.
Okay. Keeping that in mind, Counselor Monkoff Swain?
Yeah, I think, thank you. I think if that was the way it was presented, then I think it'd be a totally different discussion. Whether we, the RFP, I think, is an, is an operations piece. I wouldn't expect you to come back to us, and, you know, we don't review these RFPs or anything like that. To me, I just assumed that you were going to go through the RFP process. So by bringing in the commuter service, I think it's confusing the whole issue. So we're not up here discussing whether we should continue the commuter service. You're asking us bus on demand. You're asking me bus on demand, should we look at it? Yes. Do I want to attach it to that same RFP? No. But I want to just quickly address what, what you said, your worship, about, you know, not being too rigid. The RFP should be written in a broad enough context to ask for folks on how they can provide the best service to get our residents from a, from Beaumont into Edmonton and back. You know, we've got the specific times there, but that doesn't mean that there can be a competitive, competitive process to look at this. It doesn't mean that we have to stick with the City of Edmonton process because we know that that was expensive, hence the numbers that are in here, which are respectfully, I wouldn't vote to continue on that process. It was great to get us here and, and, you know, got us into a point where we can have this discussion. But I go back to, if we, if we take out, if we just completely take out the commuter service discussion, and we said, okay, you had a presentation on bus on demand, do you want us to explore that? My answer, yes, absolutely. Bring that back to budget. I do want to offer one piece of advice. I said, council shouldn't be involved in the RFP process on the operations thing, but here I go, anyway. Just for a change, what I do want to make sure is that there is some language in that RFP that talks about either from a participating member of the RTSC or from a private company. What I don't want to have there is, is a municipality who's not part of the RTSC participating in this process. So I'll leave that comment for you there. But in short, I support going into a discussion around bus on demand and looking forward to seeing the numbers on that.
Okay, so I agree with Counselor Monkoff Swain. Let's keep it, let's keep it high level. We can talk, because it's commuter services up, perhaps before we execute, send it out for RFP, before we execute the contract, let's talk, let's have a, let's have a conversation surrounding service level before we renew the contract as council, in terms of the commuter service. And we'll focus tonight on whether or not we want to look at bus on demand, which I'm in favor of. So let's do that. Can we, CEO, can we look at the commuter service level once the costs come back? Increase, decrease, make changes based on costs?
A suggestion I would make is, talk about that when we review service levels at the budget talks.
Okay, we'll schedule, we'll schedule that conversation for then. And so we'll focus this conversation back to, do we want to explore bus on demand? So this might quicken this conversation right up. Counselor Ben Newkirk?
Yeah, the quick answer to that is, yes, I'd like to see the numbers on that. But I would like just ultimate clarity because what the CEO said is not what the presenter said on the RFPs. So when the presenter started up here, the, it was said that the RFP was going to be out for commuter service, and as part of that RFP, there was going to be an option for bus on demand or a place that they could put that in. That's what was put in front of us at the front of the meeting. But that is not what the CEO just said. The CEO just said, independent of this bus on demand, there's going to be, the RFP for the commuter is going to move along, as Counselor Monkoff Swain had suggested, and that the bus on demand would be a separate piece. So for ultimate clarity, will there be one document, RFP, that has both on it? Or are we going to have two RFPs, one for the commuter that was just going to go? And then should council decide to explore the option to have the bus on demand? So one RFP or two? That's the question I have.
CEO?
For ultimate. I want to weigh in because I didn't get a chance to hear how Jennifer presented this, but Jennifer and I have had conversations about one RFP or two RFPs. It makes zero difference to us, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. Jen, you want to answer that?
As far as I'm concerned, it doesn't matter. We can do two. I, it was just a way to do an RFP with one, an option in it, but we can do two separate ones, and they will be two separate, one for the commuter service and one with the bus on demand. So we can do it that way.
Counselor Danilak?
Thank you, that clarifies my last question from Counselor Monkoff Swain and Ben Newkirk. So I'm good, thank you.
Okay. All right, so summarizing the conversation, so far, I hear one, two, three, five people that are interested in seeing bus on demand, and I hear four that would like to see it as two RFPs. Is that? Well, it's two different subjects. So I'm going to call, I'm going to call a quick question, just to be sure. All those in favor of, of exploring bus on demand and having it come as a separate issue from the commuter service, vote yes. Explore bus on demand, have it as a separate issue from commuter. Counselor Stowe? Okay, that carries unanimously. We will explore bus on demand. Are there any further comments as we wrap this up, up this item on the agenda? CEO, final thoughts? Ms. Winter?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. I just wanted to talk with regards to legislative process, with regards to motions that you can make in committee of the whole. So I've drafted the motion that the committee of the whole refer the item back to administration to pursue the bus on demand model and move forward with the RFP process and bring back to future budget discussions.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, that, because what I did was a straw poll, not a motion really. So do we need to do that vote again with that motion in mind?
Yes, please.
All right. With the motion as read out by Ms. Winter, all those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Thank you. Bringing us to, thank you, Mrs., or thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate all your help tonight. Brings us to item 3B, Bylaw 85115, Animal Control. With the Director of Protective Services.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a pleasure to be here with the committee tonight. Following council motion made on September 8, 2020, before you tonight, administrations before you tonight presenting Beaumont Bylaw 851-15, our animal control bylaw. At our September 8 meeting, a concern was raised with this bylaw by Beaumont resident Joshua Arnold when he presented to council what he felt were challenges with the bylaw. Included were unfairly singling out cats, limiting the environment of cats, which allows them to become lethargic and overweight by keeping them indoors. And there was a request made to consider tailoring the definitions of the, of animal to exclude cats, revising the bylaw to exclude cats being defined as at-large or provisions being made to allow outdoor cats. There was also a recommendation that the city of Beaumont could put in place an outdoor cat tag, if you will. As presented in the report, records indicate that the city of Beaumont has had a bylaw in place since 2004. This bylaw was new at the time, and we understand was used as a template for others, other municipalities throughout the region as they explored and went down the same avenue with an animal control bylaw. Modifications to the bylaw did take place in 2015 when detachment commander and our municipal enforcement supervisor both brought recommendations forward to modify the bylaw to help with enforcement as well as terminology. Legal review has been conducted with this bylaw recently, which indicated that both past and present bylaws, versions of the bylaw, should be interpreted to include both cat and dogs. When we compare our animal control bylaw with other bylaws throughout the region, City of Edmonton and La Duque, Spruce Grove, St. Albert, and the town of Stony Play were utilized or explored as comparators. Table one on page four of 81 in your council package shows exactly, or shows the comparison of our bylaw as it relates to the municipalities for which I just listed. As you will note, the majority of bylaws, as listed above, do have either standalone sections or they have content found elsewhere within the bylaw that refers to the, refers to the items I've listed. For example, licensing, owner responsibilities, and information or content around nuisance or restricted animals. Findings ultimately reveal that each municipality requires pet owners to maintain control over their animals at all times, not allow the animal off property, off the private property, sorry, of the owner unless the animal is leashed, and to not allow your animal to defecate on the private property of another person. Of note, the city of Beaumont issues approximately 1,200 animal licenses per year. We also have licenses in place for intact animals, so animals that are not spayed or neutered. Also presented on page four, you will note that the report, you will, you will note that we have presented the number of animal control calls that our municipal enforcement team has responded to since 2015. The numbers contain both dog, both calls related to dogs at large as well as cats at large. To date in 2020, 41 dogs have been responded to as being at large, and 24 calls for cats at large have been responded to by our team as well. Just in conclusion, it's important to note that since the September 8, 2020 regular council meeting, no additional residents, or no residents have come forward with any additional information, either in support or otherwise, to amend this bylaw, 851-15, our animal control bylaw. And with that, I now turn it over to the committee for any questions.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the reports. So I guess the question before council tonight is, is if we're comfortable with the bylaw after the report presented, we will accept this reporter's information. If after discussion and questions, council feels that changes need to be made to this bylaw, then we will refer it back to administration for some more work. So open it up to members, members of council for questions and some comments on, on, on the animal control bylaw. Counselor Ben Newkirk?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you, the presenter, for putting this information together. It was, it was enlightening to see, you know, some of the numbers, right? So the number of animal licenses per year and to quantify the dogs at large and the cats at large. It was enlightening to see, you know, some of the numbers, right? So the number of animal licenses per year and to quantify the dogs at large and the cats at large piece and. You know, the. Catalyst for this discussion was the resident coming to chat with council. So thank you to the resident for that because. You know, it allows us to gather some more information through the process. I guess the question I would have for the presenter is is something like this. Does municipal enforcement believe that further clarifications within the bylaw would assist them in dealing with the issue of animal control? You know. Upon hearing the residence concern and doing the, you know, this internal look. Does administration or does municipal enforcement believe that there's something that could be amended or changed to help the enforcement? Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Van Newkirk. Thank you for the question. I in reviewing this bylaw in the past couple of weeks with our municipal enforcement team. No recommendations were brought forward of the such to address your to address your question. The only recommendation that came forward with any amendment to the bylaw for us to consider in the future. Is actually a scale that would be used to measure or grade an animal attack. To measure the severity of a bite. That is the information that was given to us by municipal enforcement team. I would suggest that our numbers show that we do have, we do have. A number of compliant residents. And that our compliance is good to put it into my terms. However. I would suggest that perhaps a communications plan or an educational campaign as a reminder to our residents. May may satisfy the concerns of some of our residents to reinforce the fact that we do need to keep our pets. Off the private property of other residents and of course, under our control at all times.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's, I think that's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Just to further add to the conversation, I actually had a chance to speak with. The mayor of Beaumont, who was mayor at the time that the original bylaw came in. And it's kind of interesting. The original bylaw came in because of. Of similar comments where cats were at large and neighbors were fighting. So. This is the quintessential good neighbor by law. And now it's coming back the other way. So I'm going to make the first comment. I'm comfortable with the bylaw as it stands and and if administration is. Or even sorry municipal enforcement is happy with it. I think it's serving the purpose it's meant to do and we should just leave it alone. Comments from members of council. Seeing none. All right, I move that we will accept this report for information and. If a communications plan is warranted, we'll leave that with administration. All in favor of accepting this reporter's information? That carries unanimously. Brings us to item three C policing review. C O.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Stewart, the rest of council, members of the public. Thank you. This report is in front of council seeking direction on where we want to take this next. The policing review has been discussed numerous times and in a number of different contexts prior to and during this council's term. But over the years, the scope and the intent have not been clearly defined. So administration is bringing this back to to seek that clarity. Our plan then would be to get some cost estimates on how this review would be completed, depending on what it looks like and bring that back as part of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget deliberations. That said, since this direction was provided, the, as we all know. The province has announced and actually commenced with an assessment of the cost and values and the transition requirements for creating a provincial police force. To replace the RCMP. That data is expected to be back on in April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one. That's in the report. So for this reason, administration is recommending that we do not conduct a policing review at this time. However, if it's still councils wish to proceed down that road, then we should work together tonight to identify the scope of that project. And then, as I said, we'll bring back some cost estimates for the twenty twenty one budget deliberations. And that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, C O. So remember of council willing to open the discussion. Okay. I'll have a go at this because it was one of the things that back way back when I first started. And it it's born out of, it's actually born out of the fire excellence review that that we did a couple of years back. And it was, and it was the intent of the policing review at the time was to. Or my intent at the time was to let's do that same map for the policing department. Let's, let's go have a chat with the RCMP. And see. What, how do we want our community pleased? Do we have enough resources? Should we be adding programs like mental health supports like RC had a great conversation? With the commissioner of the RCMP, they're running a great program where they've teamed an officer with a psychiatric nurse. Should we be doing things like that? Do we have the right amount of officers coming in at the right times? Do we have the right mix of officers? Doing the right things at the right time. And so that's sort of the, sort of the, sort of the roadmap. Do we have the right resources? Do we have the right policing philosophy? Do it is the RCMP doing what we wanted to do? And it was kind of interesting when I had a chat with the commissioner. They're very open to having those conversations with us. So maybe we don't necessarily have to do something as formal as is coming down. But as the C O alluded to, the province putting on. Coming back with an RFP. To establish a provincial police force. Well, that leaves a whole bunch of unopened unanswered questions for me. So if they fire the RCMP as the provincial police force. Can we still, will we still be able to contract them as our municipal police force? Or will we be required to change them out as well? And so. Until we get some answers to that, I'm sort of leaning the way the C O is going that perhaps we should. Put this off and see where those chips fall. As much as I'd love to have a policing plan where we sort of mapped it out and. And looked at community police officers and school support and things like that. And how to add those in and how much those would cost. That's a major question in my head and I think we should should wait for that one to fall. So. Open it up to comments from members of council. Counselor Hendricks.
Your worship. Thank you. And perhaps we could go into the archives and look up what used to be called the police committee. And and just see how that committee evolved over time and the work that it did at that time. It echoes what I'm hearing here. We no longer have the police committee. We also had a fire committee at one point doing exactly the same thing. So. I'd suggest maybe we just research some of the. Archives on those items.
Fair enough. Counselor McGraw Wayne.
Yeah, just to help you with with your question. I fully support the direction that's been provided. I don't think it's urgent and given the provincial review. I think we hold tight and wait to see what comes of that. So I would support that.
Okay. Looking to the left side of the table, you seen heads nodding on the right. Okay, so we will accept this report for information and we will wait for the chips to fall. From the provincial policing review at the provincial level. And so I'll make the motion that we accept this report as information. C O, you had a question?
No, it wasn't a question. A couple of the notes that I captured that we can explore further is one. Perhaps we initiate those conversations with the RCMP. About the model and we will definitely look at the mandate and the history and the activities of the policing committee. Okay, so those are just two things that I took away from this.
Okay, but moved to accept the report as information and to. All those in favor? That carries. All right. So we've been sitting now for an hour. We can hit three E and then take a quick break or take a quick break now. I'm seeing hit three E. So we will do three E progress update, planning and development projects, age friendly strategy. Affordable housing strategy and environmental master plan. And then we will take a quick break before we go into closed session. Who will speak? Mr. Wong.
Yep. Hey. Preseason committee chair and members of the committee of the hope. I'm here to provide an update to the free of the planning and development department projects that are currently on the goal. Namely, the age friendly strategy, the affordable housing strategy and the review and update of the environmental master plan. These projects are all identified in the Beaumont strategic plan and the almost municipal development plans. The age friendly strategy is an initiative that responds to the trend towards an aging population within a community. For an increased accessibility such as minimizing barrier to services and programs as well as to facility, physical facilities. To welcome for the older population. You should note that an age friendly community can also benefit other demographic groups such as children, young families and people with disability, et cetera. The affordable housing strategy is an initiative to guide the city's diverse residence demographics. It aims to provide a wide range of housing options to ensure that everyone in Beaumont has the opportunity to remain. To stay in the community, no matter what the current or future housing needs are. The review and update of the environmental master plan is of course to update the current environmental master plan that was adopted by council in two thousand and fourteen. The goal is to ensure that the renewed environmental master plan continues to meet the city's environmental goals. And to address environmental impacts, issues and services in the city of Beaumont. Engagement for all these three projects fall mainly under the consult and involve levels with the public. That is, the city will work with key affected stakeholders and consider feedback offered by the general public as part of the development of the final deliverables. The first round of public engagement is planned to start in the fall of twenty twenty and that is late October, early November as the start date. There will be advertising. Website information, social media and digital signage displayed. Personal invitations to workshop, et cetera, and to create awareness and invitation for participation. Specific activities included workshop meetings, community survey, both online and limited printed copies. Or public online workshop, focus group or interviews and other specific activities such as. Work, a working tour for eight many projects. Final product will be developed based on deep feedback from these engagement activities. The project teams will continue to provide update and to collect feedback from council in the near future. The final report will be presented to council at the committee meeting for for discussion. Before they presented to council for final approval and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wong. I appreciate the quick update and the fact that the work is ongoing. Well, I will open it up to questions from members of council. Counselor Barnhart.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and thank you, Mr. Wong. Appreciate that this work is underway and. Just a couple of comments. One, one is that I would expect that the the Duke Regional Housing Foundation, of which we are a member. Would be part of the stakeholder consultation. And I'm just wondering, as I, as I sit on that board, I'm wondering if there's going to be any. Dates established yet and what I can tell them by way of update as to. What timeline they might be considering. Is it October, November for? Workshops as well as input submissions, et cetera, or is there something else I should be telling them?
There was an initial meeting with internal stakeholders that also include the the local regional housing foundation. Earlier this month. And there will be other workshops that will be involving them as well. So it will be upcoming and actually the engagement rollout. We tentatively scheduled for tomorrow after this committee meeting. So we will be posting. More informations on the website, for example. Workshops, online surveys and all the stakeholder groups will be, will be invited to participate. I don't have the specific time timeline on the on the workshop. Probably will be probably be mid November as far as I remember. Mid November for it will be one, one week apart for affordable housing and age friendly. Because a lot of the stakeholder groups are very similar. There will be only a handful of the. The stick over a stakeholder groups that are distinct for for the two projects, but the larger. Group of stakeholders, they are, they are more or less the same.
Thank you for that and I'll be sure to let them know about it. And just a further comment is that the provincial affordable housing review is underway. And I'm not exactly sure when the date is that we're expected to hear. The results of that review, but I would think that would be very timely for the strategy.
I'll. That is helping us on the affordable housing and they are, they are aware of that study and they are our eyes and ears for that process as well. Yeah, so. We will.
Counselor Van Newkirk.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the progress report. Yeah, I'm really interested in seeing what some of the end product is surrounding the age, age friendly strategy. Because I think that one of the things I was saying is that, you know, Beaumont has. Beaumont didn't do a good job at your first house and your last house, but it's actually way more than that. It's, you know, it's a community. The community feel and how the community is built and the supports within the community. And I was happy to see that, you know, there's a bunch of ideas being tied together here and it isn't just myopically. You know, you know, housing for seniors or whatever. It's really considering the whole community here. And was happy to see that. And yeah, thank you. Good luck for file products.
Seeing no further requests to speaker, questions for admin. Is there a member of council willing to move that we accept this reporter's information? Counselor Barnhart.
So I'm moved, your worship.
Thank you. All in favor? Counselor Downlook. And sometimes the buttons stick. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Moving on, actually, I know I had promised everybody a break, but we actually, there's actually one more item that we need to cover before we break. That's by law nine eight four twenty temporary face covering by law. Direct back services.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate, appreciate you hearing this here this evening. Administration is before you again this evening to present to you by law nine eight four dash two zero. That's our temporary face covering by law. This bylaw, which was approved by council on August tenth. Serves in addition to the existing provincial guidelines to further protect Beaumont residents from the risk of exposure to COVID nineteen. On January thirtieth, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization, of course, declared the novel, novel coronavirus outbreak a public health emergency. As it is primarily transmitted person, person through respiratory droplets released when someone sneezes, coughs or talks. On March seventeenth, the government of Alberta declared a public state of health emergency, which was lifted on June fifteenth. Of course, we activated the Beaumont's Emergency Coordination Center on March sixteenth, which was demobilized in July thirty first. And it was at around this time in mid July, the cases throughout Alberta began to cases of COVID nineteen, sorry, began to rise. On July thirtieth, administration presented to council by law nine eight four dash two zero, the temporary face covering bylaws for which it received first reading. On request, the bylaw was modified to include the wearing of face coverings in public premises. This bylaw received second and third reading on August tenth, twenty twenty. As outlined in section seven B of by law nine eight four dash two zero, this bylaw is set to expire on October thirty first, twenty twenty. To date. Complaints that we have received through both public and via local public health authority. Total nine. That is an updated number from the package that you have in front of you, which as presented on page forty five totals eight. However, we did receive one additional. Since this report was generated. The RCMP have responded to six complaints while Beaumont municipal enforcement have responded to three. No violation tickets in any of these instances have been issued. Cases of COVID nineteen in the province of Alberta do continue to rise. Also updated since this report was authored and as of today at fifteen hundred hours, three P M. Sorry. City of Beaumont now has twelve active cases. We've had a total of forty three with thirty one being recovered. In the city of Edmonton alone, thirteen hundred and twenty, the greater Edmonton region is fifteen hundred and twenty six. We are included in those numbers and across the province of Alberta, three thousand, one hundred and thirty eight. When this bylaw came into effect on July thirtieth, the Edmonton zone had two hundred and seventy six and across the province, we had one thousand, three hundred and ninety seven. New voluntary health measures have been put in place. They're shown or have been attached to this report as attachment four. They were were put in place on October eighth by the province of Alberta. These all are voluntary. They are recommended. And they are in addition to any existing municipal bylaws or regulations that are already in place. These requirements or recommendations are to limit social and family gatherings to no more than fifteen people. Wear non-medical masks in all indoor work settings, except for when alone in workplaces. And to limit their number of cohorts for people to limit the number of cohorts. And to limit their number of cohorts for people to limit the number of cohorts to no more than three groups. So a household, a school and one additional cohort, which may be a sports team or a social group. As identified on page forty-six of the report, there are some key considerations. I'm just going to highlight two. One is wearing face coverings is an effective way to proactively. Uh, limit the spread of COVID nineteen and mandatory face coverings can help prevent the spread of infection from individuals who are asymptomatic or undiagnosed. On the other side of that coin or drawbacks, key drawbacks, the mandatory face coverings include that some members of the public do not feel comfortable wearing face coverings. And that mandated face coverings can be interpreted as an infringement on personal liberty or rights. Next step with regards to this bylaw and considerations. That we asked the committee to make is extending the bylaw nine eight four two zero temporary face coverings by law ninety days to January thirty first, twenty twenty-one. Consider other options as deemed appropriate or allow by law nine eight four dash two zero, our temporary face coverings by law to expire. On October thirty first. Stakeholder engagement has, has uh, has taken place with respect to this bylaw. As presented to council back in August, when the bylaw was passed, the administration did engage local businesses between dates of August fifth and seventh. When it was determined that eighty-four percent of business, businesses supported mandatory face coverings, seventy-eight percent. Nineteen businesses did not support face coverings, while three businesses said they may not, they may support mandatory face coverage or are indifferent. On September twenty-third, administration did reach out to Alberta Health Services seeking comment on following three questions. Do trends indicate that there is a need to continue with such a bylaw? Are the prohibitions outlined within our bylaw still relevant? And is Alberta Health Services considering leading the implementation of a mandatory requirement for face coverings throughout the province? Alberta Health Services provided us no comment. However, we were directed to reach out to the ministry, which a letter was sent the same day. The response that we received back can be found as attachment five to the report and it does outline. To summarize, sorry, it outlines that masks remain one tool for limiting the spread of COVID nineteen and should complement, not replace. Other preventative measures. Following the receipt of the letter, administration did reach out with the assistance of economic development. We did reach out with to a, with a second survey to businesses. And approximately a third of our businesses responded, fifty-four out of a hundred and fifty-eight. With forty-five businesses saying that the majority of patrons follow the bylaw guidelines. Thirty-two businesses said the majority of patrons have been happy and feel safe, nearly sixty percent. And thirty-seven businesses said that business has had no change or stayed about the same since Beaumont implemented the temporary face coverings by law. And with that, I opened it, uh, opened it up to any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you very much, Chief Cook. Appreciate the, the time and effort that went into preparing that report. Uh, the mask pilot is a very controversial issue in our community. I've, I along with the rest of the members of council have received. A lot of correspondence in relation to it, both for and against. And so I thank those residents that have taken the time to. Engage with council on their own time and, and provide their opinions to us. Rest assured, we are taking them into consideration as, as we move through this pandemic. Um, it is a very different world. Um, that we live, that we are in now compared to when we first brought this bylaw in. We had very few cases when we first enacted this bylaw. And we are now currently in a position where we are currently flipping and flopping off the watch list. We are also in a situation where. We are on an enhanced, on an enhanced measures. They're currently voluntary, but we're still in that enhanced list. And most of our neighbors have had case levels rise to the point where they now have. Uh, mask bylaws around us, Sherwood Park and the Duke being two that come to the top of mind off the top of my head. And so administration's recommendation on the face of it seems pretty reasonable to extend this bylaw. Until July, or sorry, January thirty first. Uh, go ninety days and have it set to expire then. Just a reminder to council that if we do feel that uh, the bylaw is no longer necessary, we can bring it back and repeal it at any time. And so I think it's a, I think it's a reasonable thing to go with, with the recommendation unless council wants to talk about putting triggers into the bylaw. Yeah, I'm seeing some shaking of heads, but um. Other than that, I'll open it up to questions and concerns from members of council, or if we're satisfied, we'll just. Vote to accept as information and direct administration to bring it back on the, for a ninety day extension. Seeing none, we'll accept this report as information and. And direct administration to prepare the bylaw to extend to January thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. All in favor? And that carries unanimously. And just before we break, can I get a motion to go into closed session and then we'll break, reset the room and, and go on. Councillor Van Newkirk.
Yes, your worship, motion.
Uh, all in favor of moving into closed session? Brings us to item five, councillor inquiries. Questions from council? Seeing none, there are no information items, but we do have one emerging issue, item seven A Edmonton Global. And uh, this stems from a briefing that we had. Had yesterday. Um, I don't know if admin wants to introduce it or I'll just keep going. No.
Six, one, half dozen of the other. Why, why don't you keep going? Uh, I know there were some questions that were asked last night. We, we, we've got the answers for you. So.
Okay.
Mold that into where you're going.
Alright, and so basically we have a shareholders meeting coming up on Thursday where they're going to be asking us to. Uh, provide some extra funding. Uh, and so if you all got the document late, so one of the things tonight, I guess, I'm just trying to get a feel of what we should be supporting. A, options A, B and C. C is sort of table stakes to help us leverage federal grant dollars. Uh, items A and B will, will help us move the economic development process forward faster. Uh, which will aid, of course, aid Beaumont. Uh, and as you all well know, that uh, if we don't resource appropriately in the beginning, when there's not uh. You can't really make a tangible ROI. It's a little tougher to put funds in, but if you don't resource appropriately in the beginning, you won't get to where you need to be. And so I guess I'm gonna open it up to questions from members of council. Uh, or thoughts from members of council. And as well, uh, we did have one question surrounding. What happens if we don't like what? We get told. But anyway, councillor Hendricks.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was. I was gonna ask about the shareholders agreement, if we were able to. Dig that up and find out.
Yeah, I think uh.
What the agreement is.
I think the CEO has got a bit of a report from Miss Winter. Or somebody does.
Wh- what happens if we, as a shareholder, couldn't afford or chose not to pay? Um, the uh, a- according to the agreement, we would withdraw our membership from Edmonton Global. Uh, we would be mandated to obligated, sorry, to continue two years of funding at the current rate. Um, now those articles are, are, are written and voted on by the board, by the shareholders. So there, there are. Provisions to change it, provided you had, you know, majority, uh, just like any other of the articles. Um, so yeah, the, the, the whole model is based on uh, pay to play, right? So that's a response. Rob, I know you're closer to them than I am. So if there's anything you want to add?
No, but uh. The mic is correct there. So that uh, if, if uh, if a shareholder chooses not to pay, they can have a council motion to say that they withdraw. And they pay it as of that night, their current annual fee for two years there, they're obligated to. But then they wouldn't be obligated to pay any of the increases. So that's how the.
So if we didn't get the subject two that we were talking about. Yeah, so we'd have some decisions to make in budget time because I'm not really into. I'm, I'm cautiously about increasing our contribution, but it's got to come in the context of our overall budget. So I don't know. Thoughts from members of council? Councillor Danlock followed by councillor Marher.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um. I'm basing my thoughts on uh, option B, based on your comments from your experience with the group recently and the meetings you've attended. Uh, I got the feeling from your comments that there's not a lot of support you feel for option C, which is the most expensive option of the three. Uh, there may be more support for option two, and they do need some kind of direction from us for Thursday's meeting. So. Uh, based on your comments at, at the meeting on Monday, on the tele, on the Zoom meeting, I mean, and the information in the package. I'm kind of okay with the option B. I think A is just, is minimal, but option B does give us more uh. Options and no, no more resources for global, globally to do better work, but I'm not sure option C is. Us, good for us fiscally as well as what you've been telling me or what the group, I mean, options C is not really. A lot of people's appetite. So I would, I would go with the B from my, my, my perspective for Thursday and see where, see where it takes us at the, at the meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, no, fair enough. Just to clarify it, option A is the most expensive one. Option C is the cheap one. You're just reversed. But that's good. I get where you're going and I'm, I'm sort of sitting where you are. Councillor. Yep, be councillor Barnhart.
So to the administration, I, just a question of, is, is this a uh. A possible expenditure that could come out of our reserves or is there a reason why we wouldn't do that? Our economic development reserves, the one I'm thinking.
Speaking for uh, uh, Mister Dowler's behalf, uh, through a chair to councillor. Uh, I believe that it could. It's also something because the dollar amount is. Is marginal. When you look at the larger budget, we could potentially look at how we could scale up to a level. And I know that Edmonton Global is open to working with municipalities. To figure out a way that they could phase in that increase over a year or two as well, if need be, to better manage it from a budget perspective.
Was your answer yes or no?
Uh, it, it could come from reserves or we could build it into operating. Yes.
It, it should come out of operating, not reserved.
I would. It could come out of either one, he said.
Yes. I think.
Sorry, the mask.
We budget.
Difficult.
Not for one time project.
No worries. Councillor Van Newkirk.
Yeah, I was just wondering maybe a question for yourself, uh, Chair. What is the? You, you outlined yesterday briefly what the expectation is of the decision that's gonna be made at that meeting. But uh, wanting to bring the discussion back to budget, how do you figure that's gonna go? Are you gonna be the guy holding the whole thing up? Um, or, or what is the expectation? What's the, what's the flavor? What's the, how's the room read?
Yeah, the, basically, we're going to the rumor mill for that answer. Um, and I don't think we're totally. Of course, the discussion and behind the scenes is different than the discussion in front, but I don't think we're totally alone in our concerns. About wanting to have a go through budget process first. So. Um, I can't guarantee that it'll go that way, but I, I'm set. My sense is, is that sort of the way. My sense is that's the way it's gonna go.
Yeah, it does. Uh, I understand that they want to make some decisions and move on, but it is very close to everyone's budget season. So hopefully that discussion. You know, maybe pops up a bit, right? And, and uh, yeah, it might help. And it will help everyone if they can understand how the, how, how the, how these funds work in the context of the larger budget process. So, but that's all I got.
Yeah, and COVID nineteen has clobbered everybody's revenue. So everybody's sensitive right now.
That's right.
Including us, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Magathas Wayne.
Yeah, I would just, I was gonna ask a similar question about the read of the room. Um, I don't think. We necessarily need to be out in front of this. If, if you see the, the, the flow of the room towards, you know, staying the same. I, I'll be happy with that. Um, if we end up going with B again, I can, I can see the value there. My gut is, is that it's just the wrong. Uh, the wrong time uh, for Beaumont. I know we've got to put on our broader um, community um. Uh, hat here, um, and the regional hat, but um, you know, we've, we've got a lot of things going on and, um, and uh, may. While we support Edmonton Global, I'm not, I'm not sure we need to be throwing additional funds at it. So. Um, yeah, A or B to me is fine. Um, I just, I guess, read, read the room. Uh, it would be my thoughts.
Fair enough. Okay, I think I got council sense. Does anybody else want to weigh in on this before we wrap this topic up? No. Alright, thank you very much, which uh, brings us to the end of the meeting. And I appreciate all the input uh, going forward. Councillor Danlock, just before we wrap.
Stuart, um. Yes, for both uh, councillor comments. I have a statement to make if, if I may.
Sorry.
A statement to make, if I may. Um, I serve at the council's discretion on the community advisory committee. And that group uh, is the user, user groups who talk to the RCMP about community policing issues in the community. And uh, as of yesterday, um, Staff Sergeant Jeff Egan was his last day as an RCMP. Uh, he's retired to go another opportunity outside the RCMP police force. He's been a detachment commander, as you know, council for a number of years. He's done a fantastic job leading our community's policing efforts and keeping our community safe. And so on behalf of Mayor Stewart and council, I congratulated him yesterday at the council meeting, committee meeting and thanking for his service to our community. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you, councillor, for doing that on our behalf. Yeah, Staff Sergeant Egan did a phenomenal job in leading our detachment over the last years. So he, I'm gonna miss him. Alright, we'll call it, uh, we'll call that a meeting and we will consider it adjourned and.